Make sure you get the --
Please call this meeting to order. 601. We're gonna go out of sequence here a little bit. We're waiting for Shelley to chat a little emergency. So, the public committee meeting will be put on hold just for a short period of time. So, what we're gonna do first, we're gonna review the minutes from February 11th.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
You wanna talk about the board articles first? Wanna do those first?
Um, well, it's funny you should bring that up. Because I was approached by two select board members that said they had not received the board articles and I was texting down to find out. I know we sent them.
Right.
Out of my office, I thought we sent them. She's saying they went to all of them. We're double checking that. But, it has been completed to be sent out. And now I'm trying to figure out if it was a --
A coach?
If it's sitting in someone's inbox or if what the story is. But she's tracking that down. I was walking in here with the assumption that you received them weeks ago.
So, why don't we do, let's do an update on the capital planning until we wait for Shelley. How about that?
Shelley will be here in 15 minutes.
We'll kill a few policies and --
And I can go through the beginning part of the budget and field most questions.
And you have Bill.
We have Bill.
You wanna stay on course then with the public committee meeting? Go here.
Yeah. Alright, so, let me try to take Shelley's place here. And then if we have a real complicated question, hopefully she'll be here by the time it's asked. There was a general narrative of the changes in the budget that there's plenty of copies of there. And then, yes, I do have copies for the membership. It's the same thing as last year. We didn't do any changes to it. But here, go ahead and take one. And then also, there's an assessment sheet for all the four towns.
You guys need one? All set?
Yeah, I got it.
There is a full digital copy that was sent to all the select board and finance committees that was out there. We didn't make 100 copies of this very thing that you have in your hands there. But if anybody wants a copy or wants to review a copy while we're talking, you're certainly welcome to take this copy and go through it. But, you're kind of saving a three or two for those that got out several weeks ago without changes. Walking through the budget, we're looking at the general fund increase at 2.84% or $326,045 for a total general fund budget of $11,792,437. You know, I can read through this for people. Basically, the major funding changes is that we increased the substitute line item based on actual expenditures from the last three years. We also increased summer salaries based on the actual expenditures for the last three years. We're looking to increase the hardware-software line for about $16,800. This is to, as we know, we're a one-to-one school and the Chromebooks are not holding up as well. I'm told that Google is coming out with a better Chromebook that's gonna last longer. But right now, our lifespan on those is four to five years. And obviously, a Chromebook needs the last six years. So, the rotating of those as well as the smart boards in the classroom are gonna be slowly put in, as you can remember. Through the, I can give you the history because I've been here, but through the last 10 years, we slowly put the smart boards in each rooms. Well, they're slowly dying out. So, we're looking to rebuild, fix those as well. I'm looking to increase custodial by $5,000 for the summer. And this is based on OT and actual expenditures from the prior three years. We do have a retirement, the retirement severance package that $41,000. No, I'm sorry, that is for the Franklin County Regional Retirement Assessment for $41,000. And the employee separation cost, which I was talking about there, for $45,000 to cover retirements for retirees that are leaving us this year within this budget. Decreases, we are decreasing from 13 IAs to 10 IAs. And move one IA to sped revolving from the general fund. We also have an added district placement reduction of $55,000, again, based on a change enrollment going out of district. The largest increases in the south, what you're seeing here is the salary, teacher salaries, which is $135,000 or 2.99%. This is based on the contract and column step movements, such as coal work. The IA contract as well, you're looking at approximately $26,000 increase of 4.07. Again, that's based on column movements and coal work combined. And then finally, the wage increase and adjustments are included for non-union personnel, administration, central office, principal, secretary, custodians, etc. So, in addition to the general fund, Frontier will be using revolving grant money to fully fund the school's total operating budget, which is $12,515,440. The second page that you have there, you can look at the assessments. Based on, basically that long, complicated formula that the state comes up with to determine how much each town owes. You know, you're looking at Conway at a 2.17, Deerfield at a 3.88, Sunderland at a negative 2.06, and Wheatley at a 5.54. It's a little bit different, but most people know what they're looking at there when I say it than when Shelley says it. Questions?
Could you do me a favor and explain the transportation, both elementary and secondary figures that have changed?
The figures, not just the bus and all the bus were.
Yeah.
Yeah, transport, so Frontier is a regional school district. This regional school district qualifies for regional transportation reimbursement. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, they were looking at funding more to the regional transportation when regional transportation first started before my time in the administrative world. They were, you know, there was one of the sentences to regionalize, they were gonna pay 100% of regional transportation. That got all the way down to, I think, like 52% at one point where the state was covering. This year, it is back up. And you're seeing that savings within the transportation line. That's due to the state's numbers.
Okay, so that decrease in the transportation cost is due to the increase by the state in it.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Thank you for making clarity of what I said.
No, I just, so it was going in one ear and not out the other without stopping.
And so, the elementary schools do not, are not regionalized, so therefore, they do not receive a break on transportation. We won't go down the regional. No talk about regionalization.
Very quickly, student cost average for Frontier, what would that be?
I don't have that. Quite nice, Shelley, when she shows up.
I was just curious on what that would be. That'd be a good number to get.
Okay.
When you have time.
Yep.
That can be directed to the Deerfield Finance Committee. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hi, Tom.
Just getting back to transportation for a second. Any discussions about trying to streamline it or create more efficient transportation, especially when you look at some of these buses going by and there's three kids on it? I don't know if that's come up. I don't know if you've kicked that around or --
So, basically, we just entered into a five-year contract with Gripco Transportation starting last year, actually starting this year, negotiated last year. Basically, we put out what the routes are and we put out for bidding. And so, based on the size of the buses and the efficiency of buses, again, go into the bidding of those buses. So, while I'm sure, you know, Gripco Transportation, if they are buying, there's a few, they have a smaller bus now, I think you've seen it bouncing around town with the Gripco sign on it. They're making some adjustments there, but they find it more, you know, their financial package is based on what their fleet is. And so, the fleet is the larger school buses. And based on the routes that we're seeing, you know, for something, you know, again, looking at elementary for Wheatley, where he's got two buses, the size of its routes, where else you're gonna have kids on the buses for longer periods of times.
Right. No, so, I mean, I was just giving it some thought. Is there any thing stopping the district or the union from having pickup points and drop-off points? I mean, I know door-to-door service is wonderful and we all love the concierge aspect of that. But, any thoughts about, you know, we'll pick your kids up here and this is where we're gonna drop your kids off. You gotta get them, I don't know, that's --
I mean, there wasn't talk about that within the negotiation of that, the rebidding of that contract. I think your customers won't love that, especially the smaller children where your door-to-door service is more of a primary.
No, they'll love that, but if they see a reduction in cost and a reduction on their taxes due to it, I think it kinda evens out in the long run.
I don't think it's gonna cut down a lot of miles. Still gonna have to travel to an A, B, C, or D to pick them up. You know, the way the towns are spread out, you're still gonna have to, you know, you can't expect the mom and dad to travel halfway to the elementary school to drop their kid off at point A to get picked up.
Well, I don't think we're looking for a solution tonight, Bob. I think my question was directed towards, hasn't it been discussed?
I'm not sure that your suggestion is legal.
There are, there are, you can't --
You'll go a mile. It used to be you could make the kids walk a mile.
Or a camel?
Had to be uphill, both ways.
Right, there is, there is an amount of time, there is an amount of distance. If it's a mile, I'll run off that as a gag. But it's, it's, there is an amount that you can't have students walk to a bus stop. You know, I mean, I'll tell you what complaints I catch as superintendent in transportation is when you get snowbanks, then also you have safety issues because cars can't sit around snowbanks, roads narrow, and they have to walk down the side of a road. People have asked me to move bus stops for those kind of reasons. Some are high-speed traffic, you know, on some of those smaller roads as well. People worried about kids walking down the side of the road when it's not sidewalks. So, just saying, the other side of what I hear when people are asking me if they could change their bus stop or move a bus stop, that's what I'm hearing as parent concerns, which is, you know, obviously safety is our first priority. But anyway, you say, you know, we could, it's something that we can probably look at the next time through on that, within that contract. I mean, I have to tell you, the contract that came in from Gripco, and this is going back, this is history now from last year, but it was far more competitive than what other schools around us are paying for their transportation per bus route per mile. So, we got a, I'd say hometown discount from our hometown vendor. So, well, I know people are frustrated seeing smaller busloads, especially during athletic seasons at Frontier. These are those dismissal buses, you know, it's, you know, there's far less.
They also did adjustment to one of the routes with Gripco.
Correct. That's correct. We did, right, so what Bob was just saying there, we did adjust one of the Deerfield routes this year in the afternoon. So, there was some savings there. It was kind of mutual on both sides to do that. So, we did alter slightly the amount of ridership.
So, based on clear.gavs, you know, it's a website that collates a lot of school data and stuff and town data. It's about $18,760 to educate children in this district. About 655 students. So, that's about 2% lower than similar districts, but still a lot of money. Good idea.
Am I right there? Go ahead.
Couple, couple of quick questions. Any new hires for FY '21?
Yes. Just because Shelley did show up. For those who have not met Shelley, she's the business director. She is here, am I right? Shelley, did a quick run through the speed and, yes, the increases, do you wanna go through, I guess, you have to go through the increases and because some were shifting onto the revolving as well, so I mean, so. I talked, walked through the motion. She's talking about the increases in positions.
So, we have, we're talking about Frontier.
Frontier.
Okay, sorry. My apologies for being tardy, by the way. I had a little bit of a family emergency this afternoon, so. We are adding two and a half positions to the Frontier budget. Point five FTE is an existing employee. She's just being funded half now from the local fund and half from another revolving source. And there are two brand-new hires built in, both full-time positions, to the local budget.
On those two hires, what positions would those be?
An English teacher and a board-certified behavior analyst for the special education department.
Okay. Can I do a follow-up question? As far as average class size, what's the range?
So, I could defer to George, but I'll start and then you can kinda jump in. But the middle school ranges from 18 to 24, depending on the class. I understand that we do include in model of special education, so some classes may have, that's why you see a range from there, where you may have math classes that are smaller because that'd be more on the skill sets versus the associate class that have more students. At the high school, it's far more difficult to calculate because you'll have, you can have some classes that could range up to 30s are maximum. They're bouncing around at 28 to 30, depending on the course and the numbers going through and going all the way down to Georgia. I don't know the class sizes of some of the smaller ones, but around 15, 15 and maybe even 12 in a specialized.
Certain classes, not a majority of classes, many small classes.
Regional numbers, then. The reason why I was asking about the cost average per student is historically, technical schools have run quite a bit higher than your academic schools. And if I saw Franklin Tech's budget correctly, their student cost per average was 18.5. And we're sitting here in a Frontier, you know, environment, and our student cost average is running 18.7 roughly. You know, that usually does not happen. For me, as a finance committee member, that does raise a little bit of a red flag. So, but, and I understand about education, importance of it and that, but it, you know, it does, it does create a little bit of a red flag for me. But thank you very much for the information, I appreciate it.
I think that, just a comment about per student ratio, per student costs, you know, I can have, you know, Shelley dive into a little bit deeper because what you get off the DESI website for student costs versus other funding sources and that kind of thing, and what numbers they're using versus, you know, are those costs, are you averaging in, you know, special ed placements of $45,000 into those, that kind of stuff? So, I just wanna make sure that we're running off the right numbers compared to --
Right, and I do too, to be honest with you. That's why I asked the question. I just wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, that's all.
So, those numbers I gave you before were 2008 averages, so, I mean, 2018, that's the latest data they have. Franklin Tech at that same rate, same scenario was 25,000, just about 26,000.
On that, whoops.
On that, on clear.gavs.
On clear.gavs, so there is a $7,000 difference for students there.
There is a difference there. Whether that's, you know, again, the same, probably DESI's the best thing to look at, but.
Well, DESI's not, the DESI data, I mean, they're just dropping data in. And so, I was told it's not a good thing to look at.
I see.
So, as a total, but we can, if people want, we can try to come up with what we think is the, what they were, what they're saying is the right number if it's the DESI.
And I will also follow up with Franklin Tech.
Yeah.
To make sure if I can get, right, if I can get where their numbers came from, so. Thank you.
So, I had a couple of questions concerning the total budgets. And when I look at this sheet versus this sheet, my, my questions are gonna be off this sheet. And it looks here as if the total of all proposed expenditures was 12, for next year is $12,515,400, is that correct? Okay. So, if I were to take the number of students, would you say it was about 650?
Uh, yes.
No, that's, that's not. 650, then you're looking at something in the 18, 19,000 range. On this sheet, it tells, it suggests or says that we're going to use, or you're going to use 290,000 in school choice funds to meet part of that cost. How many school choice students do you have?
That's correct.
We have 168.
So, 168, the minimum that we get from school choice is $5,000. So, let me ask you a simple question. 680, that's at least $400,000 for only using 290,000, it's more than, what is, you get 168 students, that's $800,000 in school choice funds. Why are we only showing 300,000, give or take?
So, we have school choice students going out as well. So, DESI gives us the net of our school choice coming in and our charter coming in and our charter going out and our school choice going out. So, the net amount that we'll be looking at receiving for FY '21 is 309,000. And we're gonna expend 290,000 of that. So, we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to put some for unexpected repairs or unforeseen circumstances.
So, then I would have to assume that the $12,500,000 doesn't include some added district placement costs?
That does include added district.
Includes our estimation for added district placement costs, yes.
So, what I'm still seeing is, I don't see where that other $500,000 is.
So, any, any resident that school chooses to another district, we're swapping $5,000. So, those are the wash. If they're going to a charter school, we're spending out $20,000 to the $5,000 coming in. So, any kid, any child that chooses to use a charter school, it's around, using their general numbers, it's around $20,000 that Frontier is paying out of its budget for that student to be educated at a charter school. So, after all the comings and goings, we're left with that number, not the 800,000, the number that Shelley just said. Does that make sense? You with me there?
Sort of, but if I look in this, I'm not gonna see that in your budget, that added district placement costs.
The state takes it automatically. So, when they build the estimate, the cherry sheet on school choice and charter, they tell us, we're gonna take in 1.4 million and we're gonna send out 1.1 million. And they give us the 300,000 difference. So, we don't have to allocate for those students that we're sending out, out-of-district tuition for any special education students are included in here, because that's above and beyond the choice and charter numbers.
So, I look, if I look at the state's cherry sheet for Frontier, all I'm going to see is, give or take, $300,000 in school choice.
Yeah, it'll break, it'll tell you exactly each of the incoming and the outgoing.
No, it's all right. I've got a copy too someplace.
So, you have to do the math yourself because they don't do the math for you, but yes, it'll show you what's in for choice, in for charter, out for choice, and out for charter.
And up until last year, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't have any extra money. We were dealt about a wash. Two years ago, we were about a wash.
We were, we were heading for a long while, then finally caught up in that.
It was like the 1.4 million, we're paying out 1.3 million or 4 million. It was almost a complete wash. But the charter schools were the ones that are, that purchase, it's not the kids that wanna go to Pioneer Valley down in South Halle or something, it's the ones that wanna go to the charter school that's, you know, 20,000 is for kids' school choice coming in that we have to pay for that one kid going to charter school at 20,000.
We've got one of, a student is going to Smith Volk and the course of studies, as I understand it, is criminal justice, if you can believe it.
30?
When you include transportation, it's likely, probably gonna be closer to 40. Absolutely absurd. And that, and I'm not sure that anybody here would disagree with that.
That transportation alone's gotta be about 10 or 12 for the year for a kid to go from one of our towns. Unless we have a nice parent that wants to drive them all the time.
They still want the 20.
Well, we have the terminal spot for everyone to come in, so they could just cruise from there.
The riding park.
There you go. I just have, are you done?
Well, for the moment, that's for sure, yes.
It's the way you said that.
The, when I look at the budget, okay, sped is all over the place. So, do you have a number for what sped is here in the school?
I don't. We talked a little bit about this.
We did. That was a week ago.
Yeah. So, we certainly can calculate the sped numbers. I don't have that percentage with me and it's a little bit complicated to calculate because it's not all in one spot. So, it might be allocated under instructional assistance and then some under teachers and other staffing, physical therapists, occupational therapists, all of those pieces. And the way that the state puts out the function codes, it's not all in one line item. The other thing that is a little bit tricky, especially with our IAs, is that they may be in a regular ed classroom, but they might work part-time with a special education student or full-time with a special education student. So, we're happy to definitely pull that information together. It's, it's just not exactly black and white.
So, you're not keeping track of it? Well, you just started, so.
Yeah, and I just started, so I'm definitely not keeping track of it right now yet. If they, if they have in the past, I don't know if you have historical information on it.
It hasn't been split out in the past. Because I would, then I would say, what do you, what do you do with that information? You find out your, your total expenditures for special education, but that's the needs of the students you have, you know, so.
Well, I think what you do with that information is public awareness of those kind of spends. And that can generate activity at one level or another, but that's how things get changed in the school setting is when taxpayers start knocking on doors and start creating a milieu with, you know, everybody.
I mean, we know Joe Comfor is, he's put a bill through to study, it's just right now just a study with the special education costs and how they're reported because they feel that the state is not accurately funding special education costs and, you know, basically saying that, you know, 16% is your special education population and our population's much higher than 16%. So, you know, she's trying, she's trying to gather information on that so that we can provide the numbers of our actual expenditures.
It just seems to me it's kinda gone away. There was one time when it was just talk of the town, you know, sped costs and how many kids and how they're getting in and who's paying what comparatively to the mainstream kid. But that's kinda gone away and it's kinda just weaved its way into all of the little line item budgets all over the place. And I would advocate bringing it all in to one spot.
Charter school costs kinda took its place for a while because there was a huge uproar for a couple of years about doing something to equalize that plumbing, like Jeff was 18, 18 out and 5 in. You don't have to be a math wizard to figure out that you're, you get 10 kids chartering out and you got a problem. And we've got more than that. And you can't, even if you don't participate in school choice program, you can't stop them from chartering out for two kids out. You can only stop them from coming in. So, that's not the answer either.
So, until they figure out how to fund that equitably.
And you as finance committees and we as selectmen and school committee have no insight into their budget, no real insight.
And no accountability.
And you probably don't know that they are permitted to have marketing budgets.
It's definitely frustrating. There's a question about, I think it's frustrating for all of us. We're all more or less in the same boat.
They have zero accountability for the most part. They figure what they want.
I always wondered whether it wouldn't be worth getting together with Smith Academy and us staying this kind of tongue-in-cheek and maybe marketing to the Boston area, an agricultural program out here for Boston-area students. And let the Boston schools pay for that tuition and transportation and housing costs and see how long that -- and see how long that would last.
I think there's a few of those schools between here and Boston.
We can put a special spin on it.
Put a special spin on it.
You should see the tech school in Eastern Mass. Talk about funding schools. Their palaces and what programs they provide.
What's the one down the Cape that has over 20, 21 or 2200 kids at a, at a tech school?
Oh, Upper Cape Tech? Over there.
Which is it? Must be.
The, the last thing, then I'll be quiet.
Got a problem? Never seen a yet again.
A decade ago, when I was teaching in Greenfield, sitting down with the, with the teachers' union or, or the representatives of the teachers' union, going through the budget that was being proposed. And this was back when, when the, the line item numbers were pretty easy to go through and you could separate out those that were typical ed, regular ed, special ed. And then the ones like, you know, fuel, fuel and, and those kinds of things clearly are not, you can't assign to a particular education. And I was surprised to, that by the time I finished with the totals, and I'd forgotten with the totals. This was for the, the entire town. And there were some things that really weren't in there. But a budget that was, I think it was around 17 million, that approximately a third, plus or minus, could be attributed to regular ed, darn close to a third to special needs young classes and a third to overhead. And I think Bill can attest to going back to the 70s when the Department of Ed and the legislature told us that special ed was probably gonna end up costing us 4%, 5% or 6% of our budget and that they would take care of covering it. So it would not be an expense for us. Well, I don't think they're paying 30% or 40% of our budget these days, so. Yes.
There are 20%. State in general is 20% of local states.
And we don't get, oh, here we don't get that, at least on Deerfield.
In 1976, they were 41%.
So not that it can be solved in this, this budget year, but I still, you know, I know that there's been look at, there's been people looking at HR sharing for, between the towns and the schools. I think that's a smart way to keep looking at that because it's very expensive for the towns and it's so intertwined, our clerks and treasurers, what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Mainly I'm speaking more not on a frontier level, but the different elementary school budgets. That, you know, all those employees are the town employees, but a lot of decisions get made through the school and affect the town. So I just think more closely collaborating with the schools on that and also on maintenance. And we, Frontier's gone a huge step in developing our, our capital, um, capital program. And we have a great group of selectmen, school committee, all working on, you know, what, what this building needs and the grounds need. But there's also those soft kind of things that are, you know, fixing the door jam and, you know, the kind of the, we're looking at this in town too, you know, instead of sending our highway guy, we really need a, you know, we really need a, kind of a jack-of-all-trades carpenter, you know, not full-on plumbing, but could change a light socket if he had to or that kind of things. I mean, maybe it gets into more of that, need licensing for some of that stuff. But, but just the general repair of some of the things before they get so far that we end up having to spend a lot of money to fix them. I would just love to see us work together as a school and as towns. And I'm sure Waitley could use it, everybody can use a guy, you know, that maybe had a truck and could go around and start addressing some of the smaller maintenance stuff that are more, take more skill than a highway guy has or, you know, some of our DVW guys have. But not a full-on, you know, construction out-to-bid kind of project. So I'd just love to see more collaboration that way too. But I know it's tough because, you know, everybody's looking for money.
Those, that, that sounds great in theory, but it's one of those, the devil's in the details kind of a thing too. Because the, the human resources, the, the proposal, um, report from the, whatever that I saw, called for the vast majority of that salary to be borne by the, by the school. And called for it to be a full-time position valued at $100,000. And one of the real important things to how well your school doing is the ratio of administrative expenses towards the rest of the budget. And you add, you add a big chunk to a tight, it's a small administrative unit. You add a big chunk to that, then, you know, that's, that's a red, you know.
But I think everybody can recognize that, that, you know, like we did with the capital project. If you're upfront about it and you tell the towns, this is what it is, this is what we're doing and we're saving you money and headache, constant headache in your town offices as you're dealing with the multiple insurance stuff and, you know, teacher come, teacher leave, you know, all the different things that go along with it. And, and, you know, we have no HR experts in town. It's not like, you know, we're, we're on the fly. So I, I think if people recognize like we're doing with the capital, we're upfront about what we need, what it's gonna cost. And, and I'm not sure about the report, but we can work out the details. I mean, devil's always in the details, but that's how you address it. You put it on the table. You can't ignore it just because it's a difficult subject. I mean, you have to dig into it and find out a way to fix it.
So you're, you're having issues in Deerfield keeping your building facilities up to snuff?
Oh, yeah. I mean, not just, not just Deerfield. I mean, every, every building, it's, you're either gonna sub a guy out to do a big project or you're, you know, and your janitors are more than.
The maintenance, day-to-day.
Day-to-day.
You know, we've got some of these managers in Waitley. And our highway guys are really good. Keith, I got you back right now.
Yeah.
And they do a lot of stuff.
Yeah, they do. And our guys do too. But how, you know, you get, there's so much to do with our aging infrastructure. I mean, it's, all the buildings are over 50 years old and it's, it's tough.
Maybe it's time to take one of the buildings when there's maybe extra money in the town, do a warrant article or two for whatever, new roof on the police station or whatever like that.
We do that all the time. I'm talking the day-to-day stuff.
But personally, whoever takes, like in the school, we have great custodians probably in every single school. You know, we do them Waitley. They take care of the everyday needs that we have there. If it's something bigger, like an HVAC problem or something like that that we can't take care of, then you gotta call in the experts. You just can't have somebody on retainer, just do little projects from town to town. I mean, it's, some of those, you're gonna do little projects the custodians still do.
Yeah, but our custodians should be maintaining what they're doing, not, not doing construction work or replacing the door jam or doing that kind of thing. That's, you know, there's a, there's a difference in between those two of, you know, they really, there's a lot of work for these custodians to do and they don't have the skill to be doing some of that other stuff that doesn't need to go out to bid, you know, somewhere in between. I just think it's worth, worth looking at in the long term, how to share that cost.
I think what Trevor's, if I can, please. I think Trevor's trying to explain the difference between a custodial staff in doing the basic maintenance throughout the building with an actual hands-on facility manager. And there is quite a bit of difference as far as what level and skill levels that's involved. And I, I, you do see it. I think all of us are, as far as towns, have realized that our schools, school buildings are an asset to the town. We're, you know, Frontier here just had a capital budget approved in the elementary school. We're trying to, through the capital improvement committee, we're trying to make sure that we address the needs of the elementary school. And it's important, if we're, if you're going to put the money into the buildings, then you definitely wanna put the money into maintaining those things that you're putting in also. So I hear what Trevor's saying. I don't know if that helps clarify a little bit, but there is a difference between custodial, job description compared to an actual hands-on facility manager. And I've seen it in schools where I've seen people go through and, you know, you talk about tread replacements here in, in this building. In other buildings that I've seen, those tread replacements were done, boom. As soon as one started coming loose, it was replaced. There is no question about it. It was just done. And, you know, little things like that, instead of letting them build where all of a sudden now you're looking at a capital plan and all we gotta do, all the treads and that, shouldn't, shouldn't get to that point. And as Trevor's saying, even with, you know, door hardware and that, you know, crash bars, those shouldn't be replaced immediately, you know. Those shouldn't be, well, we gotta put it on a list, put it on a list, put it on a list and put it down the road. And what you really need is somebody on hand that can do that. So you really need a, a good solid job description of a hands-on person that, you know, there's quite a bit of a skill, kinda like a plant maintenance person's what you need.
And more of a, you know, maybe we can share that between the two. I mean, look, our, our budget in town is 70% education in school. I mean, it's a, it's a huge chunk of money. And it leaves us very little to do, you know, the rest of our running of the town. But we know it's important. It's what makes our, our community what it is. And it's, it's all the hard work the teachers do, the administrators, all of us here as volunteers because it is such an important part. I just wanna see it maintained and just something to think about in the future budgets.
Bob? I might suggest that some people look into the CAG as to whether or not they could put together a grant proposal to set up some sort of a program on trying to do that.
Yeah.
To get some state funding.
Too good thought.
But I, I think that to do it just at, at the regional school level, what it is, sound the school with an awful lot of overhead to begin with. But overall, the CAG could probably come up with some sort of a grant formula and how to work it and probably get some soft money.
Yeah, there are, it's a good thought because they are doing a lot more of the shared services kind of thing and that's what, I mean, we have to work together to get it done, so.
But I think, I think the CAG could probably, they, they seem to be able to get all kinds of grants for things like that.
Well, we'll try. It's a good thought, Bob. Thank you.
But there's, but there's a certain amount of sort of, you know, I'm, I'm listening and on the one hand, it's red flag, you're spending too much. And on the other hand, it's, you need to spend more and hire more people.
I don't think you've seen a, a red flag of you're spending too much here. Have there been a discussion of that tonight? I don't think so, though.
Well, Skip talks about it all the time.
Well, he, he tells you to make sure you, you know.
That's Skip! To be honest with you, I'd be talking money too.
I said I'd be quiet.
But we are, we are running that and I'm not advocating, but at some point in time, it's not how much you spend, it's how you spend it. And you wanna spend it wisely. And so as Trevor just pointed out, the schools are a big portion of our budget. And it, it's becoming a major struggle for towns to make sure that they can do what they need in the town plus take care of the schools. And at, at some point in time, hopefully, we can all realize that we have one budget, not two separate budgets. And a lot of times, people kinda look at like two separate budgets. Schools got their budget, they can do, and the town fend for yourself type thing. And that shouldn't be happening. We have one budget, you know, and I realize it's regional, so we're split. But the school is part of the town budget. And, and we really need to, we really need to try to watch that and maybe work together a little bit more closely on that. And you're right, it's hard to say, one minute you're saying, oh, I gotta cut back and next minute you're saying, oh, you gotta add. Well, sometimes we gotta think outside the box and get a little more creative and really take a look. And it's, you can't, you can't make a decision on one general little conversation like we're having tonight. But if you really sit down, spend some time with people and look at it, sometimes you can work those things out without adding a lot of cost. So that's, that's just my thought.
I'd just like to speak out just a bit, the, the, um, the way that this budget was put together and just how this budget looks, like, um, these are the good old days for this year. This is, if, if you're really aware of what all of the different constraints and everything else and the reality that we have to operate within, it's, it can't get much better than this.
We know that.
We, we understand, we understand how you people put a lot of work into your budget, just like the towns do. We're all, we're all a little strapped. I just wanna say Shelley is new to the, to the team, but she's done a hell of a job. Trevor, I know you've worked closely with Shelley, but she is, she's doing five budgets.
Yeah.
Just remember that, five budgets. Now, you guys work on one, but she's got five that she has to do. So it's, it's tough trying to, you know, just try to look up, just to look up how much per kid, you know. Maybe if, well, she had her computer, but, you know, maybe she can look it up and just.
You can ask Siri.
Okay, yeah. Couple more questions?
Yep, yep. I need a little point of priority here. We had a conversation concerning upkeep of the building and heard something about repairs getting onto a list and what's up. Do you have any problems getting things repaired here? I mean, if something needs to be repaired, you just pick the phone up and say, do it? Or what's the problem?
Do I have a problem?
Yeah, is there a problem in the building with having repairs?
There's not a problem with it, no.
So with things that done expediently and well?
Some things are done, some things are done expediently, some things are not, are, take, take longer. It depends on, it depends on the cost, depends on what we're looking to fix.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not that, it's not that black and white. I mean, there are certain things, like if we need to get lockers, like, you know, we have, there's a process we have to go through in terms of ordering it. It's like, you know, where does the money come from? So it's never that simple.
There's a lot of sensitivity around the maintenance of this building.
I wouldn't say sensitivity, but I would say that there's a lot of, you, you basically, in terms of, you have to, you have to be certain about, like, like if I'm talking about lockers, like, where's the money coming from? I have to make sure that we're pulling the money from the right spot. You know, we're talking about walkie-talkies, which are expensive, right? We're talking about like, you know, thousands of dollars. So where are we getting the money from? So it's not as simple as like just you throwing out a credit card because it's public, obviously.
But if a door is broken in the hallway today, it's tomorrow, done or close to it?
Close to it, but maybe a week or so, yeah.
But I think, so here in the conversation, you know, and through the history, we've talked about the difference between maintenance and custodial. And to hire this, this handyman maintenance in a market that, if anybody knows the contractor market right now.
A lot of money.
You're an electrician, you're not coming to work at a school as a handyman. You're a plumber, you're certainly not coming to work at a school as a handyman in this current market. If you're any good.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you're HVAC, there's a little bit of both those things, you know what I mean? We could hire a full-time HVAC person right now and save, to save money. But who in their right mind would, can do HVAC would do that? You know, because the amount of bills that go in, we talked about that. Bob Lesko, you know, through the years, had talked about that, you know, that kind of position, to go through and just fix a doorknob, fix those kind of things. The other side of things is you find things that are broken and you say, just replace it. Well, there's no hardware to our front doors. So if you go through our front doors, one set, sealed set of doors, used to be double-set sealed doors. We don't have the hardware. So we don't have $200,000 to replace the entire door system because we bought doors when we built this building 20 years ago that were, they were on discount because they were going out of business or something. I don't know the hardware of those doors. So, you know, it is, there is deferred maintenance out of necessity. You know, you say like, is the door fixed? Where does the door go to? You know what I mean? And, you know, how fast does it get fixed? If it's an outdoor door, it's fixed tomorrow. If it's an inner door, okay, well, maybe we should combine it with something else to save money. Next time we got the door guy out, we'll do him do two doors or, you know, that kind of thing. So we do save projects and that kind of thing. So it's kind of a mix, but the idea that maintenance person has been floated before. But I will tell you, the same problem I had with the HR person, because I was part of the HR study, is how do you allocate time? You know what I mean? If I, if I get stuck in a job, you know, pick on Waitley, if I get stuck in a job in Waitley, that percentage-wise of the, if we're out of the Frontier contract, it's only 10% of the Frontier bill. Okay, but you're there for two weeks fixing a door jam that can't get, can't get square. Okay, whatever we're fixing there.
I agree, it's a hard.
You know, the rest of us are saying, whoa, 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 whoa.
Yeah, fairness.
We get, you know, who's tracking it? Now I gotta get an administrator just to track that one person to make sure it's equity across all buildings. Then you have multiple buildings in multiple towns, let alone just schools.
It's a hard nut to track.
Because we do this with technology. We have a technology crew that, that works in all five schools, okay? But in the beginning, it was exactly that. We get him for a full day, he needs to be in our building for that full day. Now, when things are running smoothly, we don't have that problem. But I remember saying, when I was a principal, at the time I was assistant principal, where is he? is he? You know, we're the biggest building, he better be here fixing our computers first. We've been down there, those are some of the, you have to kind of work those out.
I think the work that you've done, you know, spearheading the capital program has, I think, has come a long ways in kind of addressing those needs and getting the towns to work together. I can't speak highly enough about that committee and what they do. So I think we'll get down that road eventually, but I just wanted to drop, I didn't mean to have it be a hour conversation, but.
It is, I mean, you gotta look at that capital, you're absolutely, I'll toot my own horn on that as well, in the sense that it is the clarity of what is coming down the pipe is there, you know what I mean? If something gets jumped on there, it's not, you know, there obviously, that may happen down the stretch, we're seeing breaks that we didn't see foresee, but people can predict, this is what we have coming, this is what's on the A-list that has to get done because the danger or programmatically the school can't function a certain way, those get moved to the top of the list and we're kind of, it's an open act that we're sharing with people and so it's coming. This is the first year we're taking a good swipe at those things.
Right.
You know, so.
Yeah.
And the majority of that is through E and D, which, you know, we could do quiet, I would say more quietly, we still have to go to the towns for approval, but more quietly on the side, but instead it's fully transparent.
Yeah.
We could add, and this came up at one of the town, PIMCOM meetings, that we could add $50,000 more to the budget to deal with maintenance issues. But right now, we have this process in place where we're saying, we're handling this deferred maintenance with select board members and school committee members working together to say, hey, this is what we're working on this year, this we have next year, and this we have the year afterwards, so.
I think it works really good.
I think it's a different process, but it's a lot more transparent.
Yep, yep, works good.
I just was wondering about your OPEB costs. I think it's line item 5250. Is that, is that OPEB or, I didn't know what you as a district is putting away every year.
We have not put anything away in this budget for over.
This is just, the 5250 is just health insurance contributions that we have to make for retirees.
Okay, so it's not an OPEB payment, all right.
Have you done any OPEB payments at all yet?
Yeah, we've set up the OPEB thing, put a hundred grand in.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I think it's about somewhere around 110,000 right now.
Okay.
But nothing's been put in since that initial deposit.
And it was a couple of years ago that the auditor did request us to put in more. And we put in a few thousand more than he requested, as I recall, but.
I know it's hard to put money away.
I know it's really hard, but it's.
We're trying to do it on the town too, you're like, oh.
And keep yourselves above.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it's like, it's gonna hit us all eventually.
If you're putting 150 for your retired insurance already, what we did is do a percentage of what our insurance was this year and then plus.
We did 4%.
Like 4% in addition, so.
Which is nowhere near enough, but it was something to get started as a policy, so. It's like 50, 56,000 maybe this year.
All right, it's not very much.
Forty, is it forty? Forty-two?
So I was just wondering if you would, you know, consider that because the problem is, it's so overwhelming and I don't agree with the calculations, but there is, there is an obligation. And if you don't put anything towards it, it is overwhelming and we're just kicking the can down the road, that's all.
I've asked this question in previous years, but now that we have a new business manager, I'll ask it again. Why is it that when we look at the budget, we can't see total administration costs and central office costs? It's so, it's kind of like the sped thing again. It's so broken up and just popped into different categories.
There's line items for all that, but in the, not in that paper, but the bigger.
What, in here?
Yeah, there should be a central office.
And this one here.
Oh, I don't have that.
That one there have all the line.
I actually think that the admin costs are easier to pull out in the budgets because of the way that the function codes are set up. And if anyone doesn't have a DESI chart of accounts, I'm happy to share that with you because it gives you some clarity on what all of these numbers mean. But it's pretty clear of what school committee, what superintendent, what's business and finance, they really make us group all of those pieces together. Where it does get a little bit trickier is the benefits and with the central office staff. But again, we try to label things and depending on the coding, we could pull it all out. And what I was thinking about when you had asked about the special education costs is the end of year report is supposed to do some of these calculations for us. That's the DESI required end of year report that analyzes all of our funding and how we've spent our money that's coming in. And it might be easier for me to look at some of those things than to look at this. It's always a year behind, of course, because it's state reporting, but it might give us a better picture on some of those things. Because it is, it's allocated really clearly of what's admin, special education, regular education, they break out transportation in different places, so that might be something to look at. It's not easy to read, but it might be something to look at. And that gets audited every year by, for Frontier it's an annual, at the towns it's a three-year cycle. But that report is audited to make sure that we are spending the money the way that we're supposed to be and that we're reporting it properly too.
Is that like a July or a August, September?
It's due in mid-October, October 31st, I think, or October 15th. But obviously you can't finish it until the end of the year, but, you know, we can always get started on some things, but it's due end of October.
Okay.
Say the, just my last point, I think, the substitution, substitute teacher costs, they're right about $75,000 according to this budget here, they've been as high as almost 100. And thinking back what I read in the paper concerning the negotiations on the new teacher salary, teacher contracts, and how that committee was trying to sort of do away with the banking of sick days, time off, which, and I applaud you for that. I guess my question is, does the math hold out? Like.
So you're mixing contracts, the Frontier meeting, the Frontier teachers removed that from the contract, two contracts ago.
Oh, okay, so that's not.
The elementary still have that in their contract and that's one of the things that was discussed publicly as one of the negotiating pluses that the school had about removing that. The Frontier teacher, it was a grandfathered point, but new hires are not, are not allowed to be doing that.
Okay.
The teachers that are now in elementary school, we're not taking that away from them. It was just anybody after July 1st that we were trying to do and.
Or limit some of it, still had it, but it was just.
And Frontier's contract is the same way, there's a date in there when we made that change and it grandfathered in anyone who was an existing employee before that change took place.
So are you doing anything for the new hires at Frontier that, in that regard, to offset that or?
They still get sick days, you can't sell them back.
It's a limited amount that they get, you can only get up to, I think it's 160 days, the first 100 are a certain amount, or maybe it's 130. And then the remainder are at a little bit higher rate, but it caps it, you know, significantly.
But that's not, that's not different for employees that have been here for 20 years?
The employees that have been here long-term are eligible for the two-day buyback per year based on the contract at their current rate of daily rate of buy.
But two contracts, so we changed that for all the hires moving forward, I mean, that's.
It's gonna take a while before we start seeing any savings in sick buybacks for our tax.
So that's, so you don't feel you're pushing people to use all their time?
No.
No.
No. Sick days are, should be for sick days, when you're sick. Somebody comes down with cancer, need 100 days, we have 100 days. It shouldn't be part of, it shouldn't be part of retirement after 30 years, sell them back, two days for every day is, you're sick, take your 30, that's just my opinion.
Private sector did that years ago. And I think the public entity like this has taken a long time to catch up, but it's dollars and cents, it's none. And my only concern is that, you can say it all you want, that sick days for being sick, but you know as well as I do that it's kind of a cop launch thing. First and I, so you gotta make sure you're not driving people to use all their days. And if that happens, you have the administrative club to be able to rectify it.
There is language in the contract that makes that difficult. Not saying that every sick day is done with sickness, but the abuse of that, there's language in the contract that allows administration to address that. So.
Okay, I'm done.
It's there, it's in there.
But in general, you know, I'd just like to speak in favor of just, you know, we have an administration now that is capable and willing to do these deep dives into the structure of the way that they do things to address things like that, which are hard to deal with. And, you know, for years, this issue, I don't know how hidden this issue was, but it was easier to just keep kicking the can down the road in many respects, I suppose, than to address things like this. Because they're sticky and they're not, they're not amenable to.
Yeah.
Whatever, it's sticky stuff. So, you know, we got it good right now, that's my point.
None of the principals, none of administration, correct me if I'm wrong, have buyback anymore in your contracts, new contracts? Not a single, not a single day. But people still come work in our district, isn't that how you like that? Seriously, I don't.
Yeah?
Right. Any other questions about the budget?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing is, can we, finance report for this year, Shelley?
So I do have the warrants here, Bob did come in and take a look at them. It'd be great if we could get at least one other signature on this. I know he's been looking them over, but it would be lovely to have at least another set of eyes. There's a lot to look at, but for auditing purposes, it's good to have another signature on there for us. So there are 18 warrants presented totaling $1,619,610.68. Do you have that? Can you, okay.
Thank you so much.
I did send out the general fund and school choice reports ahead of time through February 29th. Nothing new to report, no new concerns. I have not moved that money yet, it's bearing this from me month to month. I want to wait until we get closer to the end of the year to make sure that I have the numbers right and not have to do the transfers multiple times. The capital projects that we discussed at the last meeting, some of those are moving out already and then, you know, where we're at with the budget. Happy to take questions, Bob, thank you.
Any questions for Shelley?
I think we're looking for somebody to add to some of those warrants. I'm leaving.
You're not leaving yet, Skip's gonna vote for you.
It's gotta be many more than you.
Okay, any public comment?
Yes.
Bob, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in reading the newspaper in the last month and a half, two months, noticed two prior faculty members, Mr. John Siano, who was a social studies teacher when I came to this great school, a seventh grader, and coached, involved in football, basketball, as well as the baseball teams for a number of years. And he retired and he passed away a month or so ago. Howard Barnard, who taught social studies also in this school here, he passed away and he is also a former chairman of the Greenfield School, but he taught here a number of years. I didn't happen to have him.
I did.
I did.
And he was a, why don't I say he was a great teacher and everybody liked him? So I just wanted, if the chairman could draft a nice letter and send it to the respective families and it would make your case.
Okay. Super.
There's somebody else and I can't think of it, but.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Can you hear the second name? I got Howard Barnard.
First one?
John Siano. S-I-A-N-O.
Okay, student council report, daughter. Did she leave you with anything?
She didn't, she left her son tonight, I don't know what's going on.
That's all right. Are we gonna defer the discussion on proposed FY21 budget before we vote? Right? We need to talk about it as a group before or are we gonna vote on it? We have enough to talk.
So you took public comment, now you have to approve the budget? So it's simple if someone puts it forward right now?
Most of the way.
Okay, slow your roll. She didn't put it on the tech, but. Of course I can, I just gotta write. Yeah, I know what she wrote from the agenda, but what she didn't, so she doesn't pay out what it was either. And I didn't even hear it. So I let her run it.
Burnt out in 12 minutes.
Please do. Okay, who gave the motion?
Well, that's the whole budget that's including grant money and everything else. I don't know which number we want here. Probably the 11, 7.
What number, what budget?
Just a second, I am ready.
What number we need?
11, 7.
12. I don't know.
11, 7, 92, 437.
Yes, please, yes, sir, give her the.
11, 7, 92, 437 is the number you want it with that, because the other one has the grant money and everything else in it, that's not the one you want.
It's 11, 7, 92, 437.
Some of the transportation.
Yes.
Any other discussions on the budget for FY21? All in favor? Opposed, don't like?
I have to abstain.
Abstain?
As the state ethics, because I get a stipend from the school to do the choreography for the musical, they said I can't vote on anything.
So we probably need to, in that case, we may have to do a weighted vote.
I'm so sorry.
Abstention is not a negative, abstention is as if she's not here.
Otherwise it's unanimous.
Yeah. Are we gonna, are we gonna discuss the warrant article, sir?
Sure.
Since the select board don't know if they got them a few years ago.
So I, like I said, I just texted Donovan, so I'll be on it first, send the warrant to me, sure. I mean, I know the letters were written, the question is, why aren't they in their hands? So basically, we took the, we voted the warrant articles to go to the towns at the last committee meeting and they dropped it out and why it's not in their hands, I'm trying to find out.
We did get, I do have a copy of the letter that you sent.
E and D was also sent out, we did both at the same time, that's why.
I have a copy.
They have one and not the other.
That's the one.
And I also, I was interested in Tom, because Tom rewrote the warrant article for Conway, did a nice job. So I know he got it, so I don't understand why Deerfield didn't get it. Last night I was at Sunderland for the finance committee and they said they didn't see it, but I thought they were just, they had a new town administrator, I thought maybe they were just, we're gonna hunt down, make sure that they have those numbers.
Yeah, the comments, select board approved the E and D expenditure.
Wait, so there's a copy?
Yeah, everybody got this letter, but it doesn't say anything about warrants on it. Just E and D.
It's E and D. There's a warrant letter too, it has the language of that warrant that presented for last week, so we'll find out what's going on.
Update on capital planning, sir?
Yes, sorry, these are the lower, kind of the lower fish on the list of things tonight. So right now, we're negotiating the contract with Berkshire Design. Basically, I ran it by the attorney last week, sent it off down at the end of last week and did some follow-up stuff yesterday with them as well. Exchanged emails today, so hopefully we'll have this by the end of the week, everything firmed up, contract moving, we'll get rolling on the track. So that's where we are with that. And then that committee will be called back together to sign off on that.
Do you have any sense, Darius, whether there's any holes in the contractor schedules for this? Are we gonna make it this year?
I don't agree with you. But, you know, as the athletic director actually asked me today, you know, obviously for planning purposes, I'd say you have about a twenty percent chance, of course, and my statistics are all made up, but we've got about a twenty percent chance of it actually happening this year more, so it's gonna be the following year.
That's what I figured, but I finally asked.
But there's a chance of a fall, right? A chance? That's next year's budget?
Is it this year?
Not this fall.
No, this fall coming up, there's a small twenty percent chance that we might be able to get it in. But remember that we would be paying the bill after July 1st, so it goes on to the next fiscal year's assessment, so it does nothing to do with this year's budget. I keep saying it aloud, but it kind of, it's not one budget ahead, it's two budgets ahead because after July 1st. So, in essence, if it doesn't have the next fall, we kind of line it up for after July 1st, it wouldn't actually hit the twenty-two, it'd hit the twenty-three, but...
It can, you can, yeah.
It kicks that assessment, you know, but however, there'd probably be other stuff happening on those other projects between, it means not holding just to do the track, not holding to do the track first. Bob was in the room, we invited Bob to be a part of the interview as a consultant to us, ran the interviews, he heard the complications.
I have to listen to him first.
We appreciate that. At least she still talks to him. Some people a long time. Next, we're gonna vote on some policies. Do we just wanna vote, vote all of them at once in this list?
No, that, that last one, that last one about the speaker's limits, you would've been having to argue with each one of them constantly.
So basically, remember, for confusion.
All right.
Just to make sure you guys are adequately confused. We were given a list of policies last month for the first reading. Those policies are being voted today and are listed in your agenda. The next set of policies were sent out as part of this pack. We didn't resend two sets of policies, because then you'd have twelve policies in front and it'd be very confusing. So we will be voting on...
I did just confuse you all.
Okay, so we are, we will be discussing, we will be voting, the first set of policy which is education equality, equal education opportunities, the homeless students enrollment rights and services, the education opportunities for military children, the educational opportunities for children in foster care, and economy availability policy and procedure. So, you're now voting the procedure. Just letting you know, that shouldn't be in there. So...
Just on the policies.
You're just doing those policies. And then we are going to discuss the removal, the listing of the policies, I won't list those out yet. I will go through those and give you an overview for your reading, your first reading. So, I just listed all those policies. If you want to vote them as a group, you're certainly welcome, or you can ask to put a hold on one of them.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Sorry, sorry, because these are good ideas.
Do I have a first and a second?
Second.
Phil was the first. I go down, Phil was the first.
Okay.
Davey's the second. Does anybody else have any questions about the policies, not the procedures? All in favor? Thank you. And now we gotta, are we gonna vote on this procedure?
No.
Okay. We're all done.
The procedure was included as information about the application of this policy. I get it, Phil, I can see you laugh. All right, so, some new business? Some new business.
Stacy, you're up.
Oh, of course.
Well, hopefully by 2021, we'll be able to fly places, right?
I know, the coronavirus will be a problem. All right. So, for those of you who don't know me, I am Stacy Chapley. I'm one of the science teachers here at Frontier Regional, and we are big into... Technology. I gotta find my keys.
It's up on the screen.
I was trying to see it down here, but I know I'm getting older because I can't see it down here.
Here, I got some glasses. It's on the H.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, it's on the H. All right. I don't have anything this fancy in my classroom. All right, present. Okay.
All right.
So, and being the crazy nerdy person that I am, I came across this wonderful opportunity to actually bring Frontier students to Peru, to the headwaters of the Amazon, to do actual field science work, where they'll be working alongside specialists in their specific fields, herpetologists, ornithologists, you name it. And grad students. What I really love about this particular program is, it's a not-for-profit, it's a nonprofit organization that uses the money that the students pay to be able to go out and learn these key instrumental techniques to further fund research. And this all comes out of Oxford University in England. So, let's see. So, as I said, it's a conservation research organization that is funded by the Elizon teams of student volunteers who join expeditions for the opportunity to work on real-world research, science programs alongside academic researchers. They have research fields all over the world, and I, this was one of my top choices. My other one was going to the Galapagos Islands, but looking at cost and funding, I felt it might be a little out of reach for us. It's a two-week program. We fly into Peru, and for two weeks, we stay on renovated rubber boats that used to transport rubber when that was the key source of rubber back around the nineteen hundreds, the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, and made them into floating science labs as well as dorms where we'll be fed three times a day and continue on that way. So, they've done long-term research, looking at the Amazon as far as the availability of the resources to support the native people that live there, the impact of climate change, and the mega hydrovia dredging project where they're trying to go through the Amazon River Basin to connect the Atlantic Ocean to the Pacific Ocean, and what kind of ecological disturbances that could create. And so, all this information is gathered to help with management of preserves that, I don't have the numbers, but over ten thousand acres, if not more than ten thousand square miles, but it's, it's the Amazon, it's big. So, opportunities for our students are, as I said, they'll work side by side with researchers, graduate students, and they're gonna be learning how to do scientific field studies. They'll gain skills that can help them with their future career opportunities. They can also have the opportunity to earn three college credits through the California University system for only fifty dollars, which, as we all know, the cost of a credit at UMass is about a hundred and fifty dollars per credit. And having this experience is going to help them on their college applications, on future job applications. And they'll, as far as personal growth, they're gonna be seeing what goes on outside our little world here in the wonderful Western Mass that we have. They'll visit with the indigenous Kokama villages that benefit from this ongoing research and experience firsthand the impact that humans are having on ecosystems that are not in our backyard, that are far-reaching, as we look at developing countries and what developing countries and our carbon footprint is doing to other parts of the world, so...
Lots of birds.
Go back.
The Operation Malacia expedition here in Peru is quite different, and the students can expect to stay and live on one of our historical boats. And then we travel upriver for approximately two days, where the students will get the majority of their lecture series. We do dock the boat, and we have basically our floating research station, at which point the students will then be able to head out on their survey.
So the students have a full suite of surveys, ranging from wading birds, looking out for corals, reptiles, so caimans, there's a great survey that they run here, going out at night, looking for reflection, the caiman's eyes, and going out with the guides to catch the caimans.
I got one less, I'll say it in the evening, on the boat, we go straight into the vegetation on the river, and we try, eventually catch a major, all the problems I would say.
So my role is to lead surveys, mostly in mist netting, to test for bird abundance and diversity. We've seen a lot of different species, woodcreepers, woodpeckers, antbirds, ant wrens, skinkfishers, we see macaws, parrots, parakeets, egrets, cormorants, hawks, you name it. There are over two hundred and sixty bird species within the Pachycephalae alone, about eighteen hundred different species in Peru.
It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to come away with Operation Malacia, and carry out my dissertation in the middle of the Amazon rainforest in six weeks in an environment which is completely foreign and completely different to anything I've ever experienced. It's brilliant. All of the data that I actually collect gets compiled and goes on to help preserve the wildlife, so not only am I conserving my dissertation and my research, I'm actually helping to contribute to a wider goal, which is, again, once in a lifetime, it's amazing.
The Amazon is the greatest river in the world, it's the thing that you grow up watching documentaries on, like David Attenborough, you're actually such a richness of species, you see local people living in the intact ecosystem. Yeah, it's beautiful. Wildlife is absolutely very fun, because basically you are in a hotel that is falling on the Amazon River, which is quite nice, absolutely.
Wildlife is brilliant. I wake up every morning and look out the window, and there are a few red dolphins just through by, gray dolphins, turtles, all sorts of brilliant.
It's great fun, and of course, it's like living in a community, because you get to know each other very, very well. You will be sharing rooms with people that you live with before, so yeah, you can form quite a level.
So it's really an amazing place to stay, not many people get the opportunity, it's a really unique experience for the students, being able to move their way into the heart of the Pachycephalae as well.
We have a system here, which is indigenous-based system, and it's working. People now see jaguar roaches, dolphin numbers are higher than ever, wading bird numbers are higher than ever. We're starting to see craymans that we've never seen before.
Today, the Amazon rainforest means it's incredible, and a dream come true to be here, it'll make you go home and want to look for the beauty in the ecosystems around you, and want to conserve those and interact with those.
You won't be going to one of them, though. So, he was talking about how the river dolphin population is up and some of the other aquatic species of animals are up. This particular part of the basin to the Amazon is a flood plain, and so we're going in the summertime, when it's the dry season and the water has recessed. Landmass during the flood season increases, so there's only about ten percent available for the animals, organisms living on the earthen part, and they've seen a decrease in those populations. You see the macaws here, and we, they'll learn that they're an indicator species, so when we see a high population of the macaws, we know that the trees and the fruits and the nuts are producing enough availability. If we see a decrease in the macaw population, what's the underlying factors? What's going on? And so, there's a whole, there's a lot for me to learn too, which I would love to look into. So they're gonna be studying, and they'll be, they'll be having lectures along the boat. It's a two-day boat ride to where we'll be docking. So they're looking at biodiversity, Amazon biogeography, ecological survey methods, the Amazonian fish populations, amphibians, reptiles, bird diversity, that importance, the rainforest mammals, and conservation synthesis. And so, there are something like twenty different types of primates that are down in this area. They set up night cams to catch the nocturnal animals, and they can actually identify these guys by their spots, they're very specific. So I would love to have the approval of the school board to move forward. I have five students that have already shown interest and are ready to go. It's the summer of, end of June, beginning of July 2021.
Oh.
So it's a year from the summer.
You said it was a two-week program?
It's a two-week program.
How much approximately?
It's approximately around thirty-three hundred.
Wow, that's not bad.
So, it's not, as I said, it's a not-for-profit, so that takes a huge chunk out. There's a million-dollar policy that's included in that for any type of emergencies. There's trained medical staff. If a need arises and somebody has to be transported to a hospital, they medevac them out, but in the fifteen-plus years they've been running this particular program, they haven't had any need for that, so. Students are accompanied by adults, there's the first aid training, you name it, so...
Do you do anything else culturally in the country? I mean, that's like big culture, but like, do you do like Lima, do you do anything? You've got to fly in and out of someplace.
Right, right.
Do you do like a museum or two, or like...
So, I wrote it, we fly into a little city called Akitos, and the only way to get there is flying in and out, which was the capital, big, big-time city when the rubber trade was, was in its prime. So, so we don't do any, you know, we, basically, we fly into Aquito, we go to a secondary location, all of which is on the Amazon, and then we board the boats, so...
Flying on sea planes or is it a regular airfield?
Regular airfield. Yeah.
I assume all the kids would have to get any extra immunizations or anything?
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest thing is malaria.
Yep.
So, but yeah.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I think it's the coolest proposal I've seen like ever.
So, good job, Stacy. Is there a specific number of kids that you need to go?
I have five right now. I'm going with those five. I can have up to sixteen, so there is a limit. So, if you know anybody who's interested, I mentioned it to Abby last year.
Right, but she's...
She'll be a senior, be a great senior today. But yeah, so, as I said, you know, it's, to me, it's exciting, so. And it's a once-in-a-lifetime.
Thanks, Stacy.
Nice job.
So we have a motion, we have a second, or anybody else have any more questions?
Yes.
Does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody else have any questions? All in favor? Stacy, you can't go.
Okay, Bob.
You're welcome.
I might have to borrow those twins when they come back.
First reading on some various policy changes, Mr. Darius?
Sure. These are all, except the last one, are pretty boring. So basically, the, it's a boat remove, the basic, these are all recommended by, I should have got this as an attachment, this newsletter, an email. So these were all policies that were removed, either they're redundant or now unnecessary due to laws or policies that we've already done. So, you know, removing the basic instructional program, the language there, the student insurance program, which is no longer done in that capacity, the guidance program, we're not removing the guidance program, removing this policy, student gifts and solicitations, there's already laws and such. The biggest one that I, is, it would probably get most discussion is the public comment at school committee meetings. As you can see, if you have a colored version like me, it's red. You guys can get one. But basically, there's a lot of changing there to put in some restraints, not restraints, but we have a lot of people speaking, some parameters. I'm trying to look up what they.
Yeah, that's kind of unfriendly. I mean, like, that's like a big, so, this is, this is, every once in a while, the mask one-size-fits-all kind of, like, concept kind of falls apart, and this is one of them. Like, if you're in the big city or if you have sort of the professional school committee antagonists that some communities do have, yeah, then something like this where you are restricting every speaker to three minutes and you respecting, restricting all public speech to 15 minutes, something like that can make sense. But we are all small towns and you can regulate speech to some extent, like, I'm a, it should be grounds for removal from the meeting if they cuss, as commonly defined by George Carlin's seven words. And, you know, if they say that, it's, and there should be prohibitions against repeating yourself and annoying the school committee members, but other than that, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of regulating the time of people's speech, especially if they're coherent and making sense and whatever. And then once you, once you exceed the limit for one person and others are in the, those are all cans of worms and they make, they make.
Can't the chairman decide on?
That's the current way. That's the way I would, I would like to keep.
If you're that coherent, you don't need 15 minutes.
So, I mean, it makes sense if there's really, this is sort of like a defensive thing to do with.
Like something that happened like in Sunderland a little while back, when we had, how many speakers did you have for how long?
Oh, yeah.
Over, over the first hour of a meeting was speakers.
So where this would help?
So the issue is not the first, the first meeting where the first hour of speakers, the issue is the second meeting with the same hour of speakers to again give you, to address information that the committee already knows.
And the committee can adopt limits at any time and you can adopt mid, whatever, but three minutes, three minutes.
You can read a lot in three minutes.
Well.
The chairman can run the meeting in honor of discretion, why time off?
I think it puts people on the spot. While it is their discretion, it's really hard to interrupt someone, for example, a teacher who is pouring their heart out about why they should get an equitable, fair contract. And, you know, it doesn't put that person in a good position or I think the school committee in a good position to cut them off in that way. This would allow stricter guidelines around it, which maybe three minutes isn't enough, but, you know, for everybody to have an unlimited amount of time, it's difficult.
It's not, it's not saying that they only have three minutes. It's saying that written comments, written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the chair.
Number two, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material.
Oh, yeah, just if I have to start at the bottom, sorry.
And so the presiding chair may permit extension of this timeline, you know, you know, we have guests of, like, we, well, tonight was an open, that was, it's a, that was an open forum for that, but it's a public hearing rather, so you're, actually, that would be different than that. But if someone was to come to talk about something, you know, we don't have a lot of public comment, but this does put protections in place when public comment takes over, takes over the business of meeting.
I get that, but I actually think that that in the, in the long run, it's better for everybody generally, for people just to have their say and then, and, you know, the, I, if people are, care enough about it to come and put their time into it, then I care enough about it to listen to what they have to say or at least to pretend I'm listening.
But, I mean, so I'll give you some.
Cancer, gay, and.
I'll give you some life experience that I have in the sense that I was on the Amherst School Committee and public comment is a big part of their meeting and if they didn't have parameters in place, their meetings would be over three hours in length and people would be able to pontificate on the different subjects that are important to them. If you don't have policy to back yourself, back up, the chair can't make, will make a decision and then be considered.
I get it for Amherst, I just, I've been in school, it's nine years now and I've never been in a meeting where, where restricting people's length of time makes any, made any sense to me at all.
Yeah, I have. Years that I've been here.
Also been in a meeting where somebody took their shoe off and pummeled it.
Off of the table with a shoe on acoustic.
Well, you get style points for stuff like that.
But understand that our current, our current policy is a three-minute, that's not new language. Speakers will have three minutes to present their material is the current policy. The addition, they must begin their comments by stating their name and the city and town and the presiding chair may permit extension of this time and the red is in extenuating circumstances. So basically, that's currently, that's what our policy is now. So within that timeline.
If you've sat through Reduction in Force here or the death and burial of the redskin, if you've sat through that stuff, you'll understand how important something like this is. If you haven't sat through one of those debacles, then you don't understand how this works. Those are the two that come to mind, I've been here 45 years. Those are the first two that come to mind, is Reduction in Force, that we did with staff 25 years ago, and the redskin mascot issue.
See, that's, those should be tough decisions. Those should be, you should hear from people.
I'm not saying you don't hear from people.
As long as, as long as.
I don't want to hear from a person ad nauseam about the same thing.
Phil, as long as it's not the same people getting up, reading the same thing over and over again, something that's printed out. So if you get three people, four people, five people reading the same letter that we just heard from the first person, I think that's when somebody needs to be cut off.
If you can't, if you don't have the tools in place, you can't use them. You can also, you can selectively sort of ignore the tools.
I like, I like.
Or talk about it at a time.
Yes.
You know, you're here for a particular reason, how many people are going to speak? You get an idea how many people are going to speak, so that way you can plan on what's going to happen that night.
Maybe go overboard, you can hurt the policy.
Like you take my shoe off and I did.
No, you're from Whitley, that guy was.
He was from Canada. He was from Asia.
So basically on this, so this is the recommendation by MASC. You also, so we just kind of throw your options out to this. One, you can just let Phil be the vote against it, okay? But you can move forward with this, you can move forward with this, you can move forward with this and you can go with the majority vote that you feel this is the policy you want to do. You could send it to your policy subcommittee to discuss changing it to do that. But this, my job is to bring you forward the recommendations from MASC, they're saying, they're suggesting these changes and if you read through where the red parts are, there are some areas where, you know, where it tightens up a little bit, that is, that can be, be helpful in times where there's stress in the chair. And there's also, there's, you know, language about, in there if you read through, about public comment goes through the chair. They don't come in and start yelling at individual people on the committee or speaking, you know, you know, at me, it's a, it goes through the chair, you speak to the chair to discuss a problem. You know, sometimes people come with emotions behind their, I think it's just about creating civility in that, so.
Move the option.
Well, this is just a, just a, just a reading, we're going to do this next time again too.
All right, no, no, next time I won't say a word.
No, you only get three minutes next time.
There's a couple of questions.
So the crossed out language and the black language, the language that we already have is already our policy?
Yes.
The black? What's written in black is the old policy, written red is the new policy, and what's crossed out was the old policy that was removed.
Okay, so then, so the last one, number six, about the sign-up. So an instance like tonight, if we don't have a sign-up sheet every single time and have people sign up, but we didn't violate violation of our own policy, or should there be language in there that gives the chair discretion about whether we need to go through this, that policy or not? In total, there is language in there about the chair having discretion for individual speakers, but we're going to have to, you know, I find it very rare that we've ever had to really do this.
Right.
So unless we're falling into a T, you know, we're going to put ourselves to that.
It says sign-up instructions.
I guess, I guess if we have something.
The afternoon, the chair has to say, is there any public comment? You give instructions on how they comment, that's, I mean, I don't see it, basically.
But I agree, but should we have, I agree with Keith saying.
Sign in, like, what's my line?
The chair, based on the number of comments or the, you know, the, you know, the chair can weave.
If we have one person, we're going to make them sign in and do all that, you know? That's basically what I'm.
We haven't.
But the recording secretary is going to get their name.
But this is the same policy as going to all the elementaries and it's the same, it's the same issue there. Elementaries, you have one person comes in, I just want the comment that.
You have to do something.
And you're right, you have to do a sign-in sheet and that kind of thing. I will do for my homework, I will get, I will talk with the attorney about whether or not we can put a line in there that they can be waived based on the chair's judgment of the public comment, of the capacity for public comment then, or some kind of language there. Should I do that?
Informal, we can do the last one.
What's informal?
Are we all done with?
I will send that language out to you prior to the meeting so you can have it as your, as your reading.
Okay, reports. Just want to let you know that my knee replacement went well. I've been, I've been itching over here to get out of here, so I won't talk too long, but it was very successful, can't sleep at night, but feels good to have a new knee after only two and a half weeks. I'm driving, driving to Springfield today for PT, so. Collaborative? Nothing?
Meeting until the.
Okay. George, I think you handed out something?
Yep, I, I, actually, I didn't hand out something, I sent, I shared it to people electronic, with people electronically, if anybody needs a harsh copy, let me know. Just a couple brief things, just a reminder, we are going to be presenting the musical Annie, it's coming up, Friday, March 13th at 7:00, Saturday, March 14th, also at 7:00, and Sunday, March 15th at 2:00.
Who's dog?
So be there.
Who's dog is?
Okay, what's that?
Who's dog is?
I don't know, whose dog are we using?
We're using Conus, it is one of our school choice in people's dogs.
So is it a three o'clock?
It's a three.
It's a three, all right. My apologies, it's a three o'clock, Conus, it's a 15, so be there. I wanted to let people, just a reminder, early release days are back in March, we're continuing to work on PD, we're going to be continuing our focus on special ed. I shared a couple of links as well, some of the new instructional software that we're going to be, that we're going to be introducing more fully, including Paradex, including New Zealand, which, which allows us to differentiate instruction, which is wonderful. I also wanted to, once again, highlight the fact that we're continuing to work with our peer mentors, we currently have 19 high school students who are working on a consistent basis with our middle school, with our eighth grade students. We've been working with, we have worked with Fallacies, we've got the One Love Foundation coming in shortly to also, to continue their training and we've started having sort of preliminary discussions with some of the elementary school principals about potentially having the peer mentors after they're trained go down, perhaps not for this year, but maybe for next year, to go down and visit with sixth graders and try to, try to, and work with them as well. And last but not least, very important, we want to congratulate Steve Blinder, who is our math department chair and one of our math teachers, he's won the Grin Spoon Award for excellence in teaching. Steve is an amazing teacher, if you ever have the opportunity to pop into his class, you will be, you'll, you'll love it. He's a great guy, a great teacher, we're lucky to have him, so we want to congratulate Steve as well.
Can I ask the other, all of you a dumb question? Do you all get George's report?
I couldn't go without.
It does not get to me.
I shared, so I shared it this afternoon?
Could you get it? 12:25.
Okay.
Because I have all my, the Gmail account forwarded to Comcast and I get, I get Donna's stuff and I get, but I don't, I don't know where it goes, but it doesn't get.
I can, I can, I can make you a copy if you want one, but I can, I can, is it better to send you it as an attachment? So today, what I did was I shared it as a Google.
Right.
I'd really get it as an attachment.
Okay.
But I'm a short timer.
Yeah. So I can do that, I'll get it to you.
Next piece, if you forgot, then you're done.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I used my strategy out loud, sorry.
Public comment is very important because I got to learn the rules when I want to commit and harass people.
There you go.
Well, it is important that the rules be in place for it.
Yeah. Good point. Yeah, when you sit next to Skip next year.
So I'll send it to you, Bill, and Bob, I'll send it to you as well as an attachment.
I've been here for the committee for years. Darius, your turn.
So it's kind of one of the, get people to speed, I sent out the coronavirus or COB ID-19, I sent out the, the letter I sent to the community, I now have a, based on our website, links for people to go on to see how we're making decisions and such. It's a wait and see from the school's perspective, there's no magic, no eight ball that we look at to figure out what we're supposed to do next, we're going to have to take advice from local and state health. The one thing that is going to be coming across is that we do have three foreign trips coming up. We probably have the most in the area for foreign trips right now. The Netherlands trip, which is only in a few weeks, we're going to have to make that decision within the next week or so. Right now, just looking at it, they do have insurance for the trip, so that's not really the concern, but can we postpone? And we're in conversation with the Netherlands about, you know, can we move it to another time, that kind of thing.
There is a confirmed case in Orkem, which is where the trip goes.
Yeah. In Orkem, and that's the.
That's where the trip goes, there is a confirmed case.
There is a confirmed case in Boston, all the.
So it's, it is one of those things where it's the balancing of.
Yeah. If a child gets sick and they're going to fly him home, who's going to pay that cost?
There's insurance, don't we have insurance on all that?
We don't have insurance, I have, you can take out, you know, travel insurance, and that particular one, that'd be the family's responsibility to buy him home.
Yeah, my question is.
I think if I was traveling, I'd be more concerned about somebody telling me that I have to stay here for 14 days because the guy three doors down has the virus, so I'm not going anywhere for 14 days.
I'm also thinking about the financial, the kid's there and they're sick and the parents don't have the money to bring him home. That, that's a scary thing.
So basically, let me put this back out there. You approve these trips, you have the rights to unapprove them. However, right now, it's, I've talked with other superintendents and superintendents are making decisions based on, executively based on information they're getting from basically where the trip is going, you know, how it's being, those kind of things. So actually, I just got a thing from, I tell you, the amount of emails that we have going around on this, the state right now, they probably have a list of 30 trips across Massachusetts that we probably have, I'm looking through about 60% have canceled to various places throughout Europe, Eastern Europe, even China's on the list, and others are undecided. Only one was where the school committee put moratorium on all international travel, and that was Westfield. So the rest are being done by.
Does the school just have an opinion on this stuff?
If we only can find one.
I get to comment, I told you.
So I am working with, with, you know, we can ask, you know, Ashley can chime in, but I have been working with Bad Governor's Leader as well on multiple things, what are we doing here, what are we doing about talking to people and that kind of thing.
There's a fine line between being careful and like my friend that dropped off a case of Corona beer at my house because, you know, coronavirus.
Yeah. I hope he didn't touch that.
No, it tastes like water, it's awful.
Did he sit there and drink it, William?
No, I gave it to somebody else because coronavirus.
Were you guys asking Ashley a question?
Nope.
Cancel or keep it?
I think it's a wait and see at this time. I think that the hype around the concern is, it's really a dog and pony show in that, in the media right now. I think it's a valid concern to watch. I, I, I can't get super excited about one confirmed case in the community where they're going unless they're not handling that well. But in a country like, you know, in a region like the Netherlands where there's healthcare that is accessible to all, I feel confident that it would be handled well. And if all the, the communications are taking place appropriately and people are being vigilant and monitoring the situation, I don't feel a choice, a decision at this time needs to be made. I think if travel advisories are put into place, that's very significant, that would kind of, I think, concretely guide our, um, approach. And, you know, it really just depends. Mr. Decker, you said if a student were to get sick and needed to fly home, where would that cost come from? I don't think a student who became ill would be flown home. I think they would remain there and be quarantined, and the parent may or may not need to fly over, which I know for some of our international trips is written into the agreement that if you're sending your kid and they have an accident, injury, or illness that requires stay, you have to go there. The parent is responding, it is incumbent upon the parent to go.
Who pays?
Parents.
But that could be anything.
That could be.
True, if they break a leg.
Break a leg, but honestly, a person with a broken leg can likely fly home. However, they get hit by a bus and they're not gonna, not that that's going to happen, I'm just saying. It's a common expression, but like if you're laid up extensively, that could be a reason why a parent needed to go join. Um, and I think we need to just evaluate the regions and what's going on there.
So could we vote for superdumb authorization to use his discretion on those scheduled trips? His good conscience thinks they should be deferred, to defer.
Why, you guys made the decision.
But this board is not going to meet until sometime in April, and this is early March.
Right, it was my, I asked, I asked other superintendents in the past when they had to cancel trips, did they go back to the school committee, and they said no, it was an administrative decision. So, I'm just saying, in practice, that's what it was. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to take power away from it. Curly, if you guys want to make the decision, I'll give you the issue, you guys can make the decision, but, um, like I said, right now, we're, we're, with the Netherlands trip, which is the one trip that we kind of control, we're not using outside company to run the trip. The other trips that are happening in April, which give us, you know, a little bit more time, those are run, if they aren't canceled by the company that's doing it, there's no refund. Okay, unless they bought the additional insurance. So, and we're not even sure who has the insurance on those things, they're getting that information for us now because the money doesn't come through the school on those microphones. On the Dutch trip, that exchange, to reduce costs, we got rid of the travel agency, we've been doing it ourselves the last few years. So, but they do have travel insurance, full refund, I mean, the full insurance, you know, how some have like no pandemic, no acts of terrorism, that kind of, they have the full refund insurance. So, you know, we're, at this point, you have to understand when they go to the Netherlands, all other countries are sending kids at the same time, remember that kind of whole thing? And so there's, there's other factors here than just, they're not just visiting a country, they're going there and becoming part of the community, which is a lot different than being on a tour bus, going to a couple of sites and back to your hotel. They're going in and living with families as long as well as many other nations coming together, so. I, we have a feeling that it's going to be postponed or canceled of that, of that thing, but at the same time, we're trying to, even if they cancel on their end, we're trying to work with the Dutch to maybe do something, a visit outside of their programming for this particular group of students, and then continue next year, and even maybe even into next year, so that's what we're proposing out there.
Has any communication gone out to the families of the kids of all those trips that it's at least under consideration?
There's a draft, we met today to go through it, there's a draft on my desk, yes, so that will be going out, um, probably tomorrow morning. So, but at the same time, we're trying to figure out, trying to get information. Right now, we don't have information, only that we're looking at it. So, and then we have to, we have a deadline of that coming up, too. So, and there's a parent meeting on the eleven, they're considering asking me to date that event, if not before then. Okay. The last thing, I know everybody's tired, wants to get out of here, but you just need to understand that I gave you a handout that's double sided, which is, I also sent you a link on the website that does the whole student opportunity plans. So I just kind of went, just, just to leave it on a good note. So, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, because some schools are getting a lot of money, they, um, the state wants accountability for how you're spending your chapter seventy money. And so, we got seventeen thousand dollars at Frontier. You know, proportionate, it sounds like a seventeen thousand, it's nothing, it's a drop in the bucket. We had to fill out a form with the states called the short form, for those receiving under one point five million, had to fill out the short form, which is the majority of the state, it's eighty percent of the state got less than one point five million. But we just got that per, per yard per pupil, but we have to justify how we are spending it. And so we are just going to continue to what the, what we're already working on, which is inclusion, including co-teaching for students with disabilities and English language learners. It's a process we've already started by changing the schedule last year, allowed us to change the delivery of special education. And so we're looking at doing more, a co-teaching model with that, so our professional development is already lined up in that. It falls in as a, if you turn it over, it falls in as a, um, one of the, one of the exemplars that they're using for how to use the money. So it's, it's kind of falling into there, but I, I sent you the whole, the link to the page, if you're interested in all that, but it's just interesting that we get less and less chapter seventy money, and now they want us to justify how we're using that money through a research base, it's got a bit, there's certain criteria.
Do they actually collect them and care about what you say when they send it in?
So.
Like, like the super.
Even better, you guys will, you'll, you'll like this as a, you'll like this as a school committee. They want school committee approval of it, okay, so we'll vote it on the next, I didn't have time to put it on here for a vote. Approval of it, but they say go ahead and send it in, even if you don't have approval, so we make the April first deadline. So apparently, your approval isn't that important, if I can send it in without it. Just to make, it's in, if you watched, if you lost the sideshow, you can hear them say that. Just, you know, please just get it in for April first, but if you don't get it in, well, we'll be calling. Curious, maybe they'll call me, I'd like to talk about it. And just, just, another pain in the butt is I have to do five of them. Because each district has to submit its own one, even if you're in a regional situation or a union, rather, they want each school to send its own two-page report on this kind of thing, so. And you're talking, Conus got two thousand dollars, I can explain how that two thousand dollars is going to change how we're doing education in Conus. No sarcasm, Stacy, no sarcasm at all. All right. And then I just have the list of what I have ongoing. So we'll officially vote it, because I got to get that out on the block for the next meeting, but, um, that's what.
Anybody else have anything? All in favor?